Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 8, 2014 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at 6:03 PM. May we have a roll call?
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Life's Lu tonight will be led by Councilmember Sinanian.
Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance.
Invocation by Artie Casack.
Please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Our 26th President Teddy Roosevelt had many notable sayings and words of wisdom, which we still use today, over a century after he served in the White House. For this evening's invocation, we reach back to over a century ago on 8/17/1912, when during a speech in Chicago, Illinois, then-former President Teddy Roosevelt pointed to a very simple truth that is at times forgotten in the arena of political discourse, that, quote, "This country will not be a good place for any of us to live in unless we all make it a good place for all of us to live in," end quote. His words are the essence of why we gather each Tuesday, to recommit ourselves to our democratic values in these chambers. Tonight, as we gather to select a new mayor, we pray for this wisdom along with the spirit of harmony and cooperation to guide us through this process. We pray that all who have been trusted with the important responsibilities of making this decision will do so with a willingness to work together to make our city safer, more prosperous, and stable, to ensure that we make Glendale a good place for all of us to live in, to work in, to play in. We are blessed to have this, to be our home, and pray for the continued blessings which we are so fortunate to receive. Amen.
Amen. We have your report.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda for the April 8, 2014 regular meetings of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 3, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And now, Mr. City Clerk, I think I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The business before the council is the selection of a mayor. The City Clerk will now entertain nominations for the office.
I would like to nominate Mr. Sinanian for mayorship.
Move to close nominations.
Wait up, time out. Is Laura going to be in? Is Freedman going to be in or not?
We are waiting a telephone call. We do not know yet.
So...
That is the arrangement?
Yes.
Will we go take the vote without, or...
We did advise her that 6:10 would be the time.
Well, we can stall for three, four minutes.
Can we... I mean, is there any...
Someone calls the question.
Yeah. I mean, I think the votes are there, so...
I think it's important that we've traditionally always had all members present during the organization.
This is the first one, long distance.
I could turn it over to our Assistant City Manager for the preview of agendas for next week, which...
That's a good idea.
Actually, we have no previews for agendas, so, other than that and a soft shoe number, there isn't really much I can do.
We can't go ahead with presentations? Can we go ahead with presentations and come back?
Yeah, put this on the table and just go to the next agenda.
We'll put it on the table. Let's go to presentation appointments.
Well, as it is listed on the agenda, the next item is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, April 15, 2014.
Thank you, Ms. Freed... Ms. Beer. Misses...
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, unfortunately, I do not have the afternoon meetings for next week, as the City Clerk was chuckling a little bit and we're trying to stall. If I had it, I'd read it to you, but I don't want to do it from memory and make a mistake.
I can tell you that we do have the return of the Tropico Project pursuant to council direction to the proponent, and I believe that is the only item on the afternoon agenda for your consideration.
And may I also make note, none of the names are correctly. Ms. Beer says Scott Achoa, Don Mensey is Scott Achoa, and over here, okay, we're getting them corrected now. Mike Garcia is Clay, Steve Zern, Scott Achoa...
We had an interesting afternoon.
Yes, we've had an interesting afternoon. Okay, now I recognize everybody. We only need to hold for one more minute. Okay, go to B, 3B.
3B is a proclamation designating April 13 through 19, 2014, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
And who's going to speak? Because I don't have anything up here, so...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers, Don Wise, Executive Administrator, Verdugo Fire Communications Center. We know that you have a very full agenda tonight, so we'll make this short and very quick. We'd simply like to say thank you for honoring our 911 professionals and the call takers and the dispatchers for both the Glendale Police Department and the Verdugo Fire Communications Center, recognizing these individuals and the work that they do in helping people in the most extreme portions of their life when they need help the most. We'd simply like to say thank you, and thank you for recognizing our folks.
Thank you. I do now have a proclamation. My last act, official act. Oh, boy. "Whereas across the nation in times of intense personal crisis and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 911 center. And whereas the Glendale Police and Verdugo Fire Communications Centers that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. And whereas this week, celebrated annually, honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens, residents, and visitors of Glendale, therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 13 through the 19th, 2014, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and congratulate the dedicated and hard-working members of the Glendale Police Department and the Verdugo Fire Dispatch Communication Centers for their ongoing outstanding service rendered to the community." Mr. Girin, would you walk it down? I think you should. So, thank you. Many of you might have seen this on TV. A woman back east, first day on the job as a dispatcher, and a call comes in. She recognizes it as her mother calling in. She does what she was trained. She goes through the whole process, hears the person breathing and so on. Mother didn't even know it was her own daughter giving the instructions, and she was readily recognized, being so professional, on the very first call she got as a 911 dispatch. I don't know how many saw that, but that's quite interesting.
That's a great story.
Hey, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's one more proclamation that's signed by the mayor, so I don't...
Okay, read the next one.
At 3C is a proclamation designating April 20 through 26, 2014, as the Week of Remembrance.
Okay, come forth who is receiving the proclamation. Okay, let me read the proclamation first. "Whereas the City of Glendale believes that cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each of its community members, today we can no longer innocently harbor feelings of superiority and separatism in our society. And whereas many in our community who are of Armenian descent have lost a significant number of family members, belongings, and heritage in the Armenian genocide, the hurt is deep, and we look forward to a time when the tragedy will be universally acknowledged. And whereas we appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the Week of Remembrance to commemorate and recognize April 24th as Armenian Genocide Day and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington, DC to do the same. Whereas we encourage the community to support and actively participate in the annual events of commemoration and remembrance, and to increase their efforts to educate our community not only about the Armenian genocide, but all immense inhumanity to man. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim April 20th through 26, 2014, as the Week of Remembrance, and invite all members of the community to participate in the activities and events of the Week of Remembrance."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Dan Bell, staff member to the committee, and Mr. Najarian, Mr. Quintero also. Just want to thank the committee members here for all their dedication, time, and work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And one thing also while we're up here, and I'll let some of them speak also, for any updates, the community can go to our brand-new website and find all the details, or Facebook and Twitter. All the details for that week are on there, so, thanks.
And who will be the speaker?
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor Weaver, this is a very special time for all of us living through what is going on around the world, especially for those who commemorate the Armenian genocide. It is also a time we reflect on what is going on in Syria, and in particular in the village of Kessab, where the continuation of depopulating and ethnic cleansing of Armenians from their historic homeland is continuing. I was especially proud that our city is one that not only remembers the Armenian genocide, but put up a statue to remember the Comfort Women and for standing up for that. We appreciate what the council did. Yesterday, many of us from the City of Glendale were in Sacramento, and we were proud to see our state Assemblyman, Mike Gatto, be the first speaker at the commemoration on the floor. We were proud to see our state Senator, Carol Lou, to be the first speaker on the floor of the Senate on this issue, and we were especially proud to see our City Clerk deliver the address to the State Senate on the commemoration of the Armenian genocide. We thank our city leaders for this special remembrance. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I should also note that Councilmember Friedman is now adjoining us by telephone remotely.
Hi, Ms. Friedman.
After the photo opportunities, I'd like to say a few words. We started this endeavor, quite frankly, was it, I don't remember, 12 years ago? 10? 11? So, 11 years ago, we started this endeavor, and some of the original committee members are in the audience. Peter Dorajian, Burj Karapetian, Arteen Manukian, Aharonian. We started this committee with the idea of having a remembrance ceremony for the Armenian genocide, and then also for man's inhumanity to man, and to discuss and talk about different acts of cruelty and genocide throughout the world. And it's grown every year. It seems to almost get better every year. And one of the things that has always been the sort of highlight of the event are the different speakers that we've organized to speak to the public. This year's speaker is no exception. The program we have is historically very, very interesting, and it basically deals with what was called the Near East Relief Agency, or came to be called that, but it was basically an organization of Americans, United States citizens of the time, including three presidents over a period of time, that focused on the Armenian genocide, but specifically that focused on the orphans, the tens of thousands of orphans that were a result of what took place. It's going to be a tremendous, tremendous program. This man is very well-prepared. He's documented everything, and I encourage everyone, and make sure you tell your friends to come to this event at the Alex Theater, because it's truly going to be an incredible presentation, a historical reality from the perspective of Americans, everything from newspaper articles to the posters of the time, the money that was raised here in the United Kingdom, in Argentina, literally all over the world. The focus was on the genocide, and specifically on these poor kids and whatever parents were still alive, so...
Thank you. And now, going back to what we had put on the table, is Ms. Friedman on?
Councilmember Friedman.
Ah, that's a first. I did that once in Las Vegas, I remember.
If I may go back to the previous item, the business before the council was the selection of mayor. Councilmember Quintero nominated Councilmember Sinanian for the office of mayor. Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor?
Move that the nominations be closed.
Hearing no further nominations, we can proceed to the roll call. For Councilmember Sinanian to be mayor. Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Weaver.
To me, I'll just make a short statement. I'm not going to stand away this nomination, absolutely not. I'm sure that Zari will do a great job. I'm not going to vote no either. I'll abstain, only on one reason. It says in the ordinances that a person who serves as mayor should have years of experience, should have experience on the council. Since Larry Zarian served, the average time that a councilman served before he became the mayor was three and a half years. There's only one other councilperson that, like Zari, stepped up to the mayor, and that was John Draymond. So, with that, I'm simply abstaining. Congratulations to you.
Hold it. You now declare Councilmember Sinanian the duly-elected mayor of the City of Glendale.
And may I wish you good luck. You'll need it.
I will. I will.
What now? Oh, okay.
Mr. City Clerk, I have some comments I'd like to make. I had a 25-minute speech, but I'm going to spare you and give you the four-minute version of it. So, thank you. I'm truly honored and humbled by the trust bestowed upon me by my fellow councilmembers and by the residents of the City of Glendale. The position of mayor is a responsibility that I don't take on lightly, and I will do my utmost to carry out in a honorable and respectful manner. Before I give a short roadmap of how I see the City of Glendale moving in the next year and beyond, I do want to thank those people without whom I couldn't have been here. And first and foremost, that's my wife, Lori Sinanian, my best friend, mother of my four children, our four children, and really an extraordinary human being. Thank you for your unwavering support, Lori. My children, who remind me on a daily basis as to what the most important thing is in life, and why we must all strive really hard to make sure that the future is bright and secure. My parents, without whom I obviously wouldn't exist, but more than that, I could never have committed myself to public service. And last but not least, my sister, who's been next to me throughout my life. Thank you. As for my colleagues, the last year has been very educational for me, and all of you have had a unique role in that. Frank Quintero, two months, I look forward to serving with you the next two months, and I'm sure we'll be able to work even beyond that period, but thank you for your mentorship and your support over the last year. Mayor Weaver, thank you for your leadership in the last 12 months, and I'm sure we can work cooperatively.
Probably better. But you can now call me former mayor.
Well, yes.
Larry Zarian said that you're not a... What is... You're only a former mayor, not a previous mayor, whatever.
You're three times former mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
There you have it. Councilman Najarian, our votes haven't often aligned, but I think we're going to increasingly cooperate on all matters that concern Glendale.
Is that a promise?
Thank you. No, that's a promise. And Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Laura Friedman, thank you for your support. We have, in fact, voted along the same lines on a lot of issues, and I look forward to increased cooperation also on making Glendale a better place for all of us. Now, Glendale, like most other cities in the U.S., has significant fiscal challenges, and over the next year, no stone will remain unturned, and no option will be ignored to make sure that our city administration is streamlined, that all extra costs and expenses, to the extent they exist, are minimized, but we retain the level of services that our residents expect and deserve. In the meantime, we are going to protect the businesses that are in Glendale. We are going to attract more businesses to Glendale and make the environment in general very business-friendly. Our residents, like I said, should expect and are entitled to expect the level of services that we provide and more. Nevertheless, the challenges that we face in this city should not be resolved at the expense of higher tax burden on our residents, nor should they come at the expense of the security, the great security that we enjoy in this city. We will do everything to ensure that all parts of Glendale, from far north to south, from east to west, big businesses, mom-and-pop shops, homeowners, renters, everyone has the ability to be fully engaged in the business of the city, and that their concerns are always heard and addressed in a timely manner. I believe, as I stated in my swearing-in speech, I still believe that we should hold city council meetings outside of City Hall once in a while, especially in those areas that are physically far removed from downtown and from City Hall, especially on those issues that concern those areas particularly. I also believe that as a matter of policy, as an effective way of engaging more of the populace and informing them about what's happening in the city, we should translate city-produced materials into Armenian, into Spanish, into Korean, into Tagalog, thus increasing the level of access and transparency of the city business. Over the next year, we're going to work hard to make sure that our vision, our joint vision for downtown Glendale, whether it's the 18-hour day, arts and entertainment, burgeoning restaurant and retail sector, is realized in the shortest possible time. In the meantime, we should look for continued funding for those that are most economically disadvantaged, the elderly and the low-income residents, who should have the right to live in Glendale in a dignified and meaningful manner. Next year will be a year during which we will jointly contribute towards keeping Glendale a city where families live and prosper, where parents see the future for their children, and where young adults want to stay and settle because of our safety, because of our high living standard, because of the arts, the entertainment, and all other exciting things that are happening in Glendale today. And we will have a safe city for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. So, once again, thank you, and let's make this a great year for continued progress in Glendale. What's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Yes, Mr. Quintero.
I'd like to make a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Sinanian, for making this one year a little more tolerable, I guess, and a little bit easier. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I've known you and your wife since you graduated from law school, and both of you still have that same fresh look about you, that young, even with four kids. But I think that's a testament to your parents and your sister and brother-in-law that are always, always helping you with those four kids. But, no, I'm very happy you're serving. You're very intelligent, very quick study, and you have something that isn't taught. It's just something, the idea that some people, in my opinion, just have a feeling for what's right and what should be done and what can be done, and I think you bring all of those qualities to the table. So, congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I also would like to congratulate you, Mayor Sinanian. I wouldn't worry about the experience issue. That's perhaps an arcane section of our codes and our policy. Anyway, I'm always ready to give you any advice, any tips, should you need it. You might not need it. You've had a good year under your belt, so I am here to support you fully. I have a couple other items. Today, the city attorney requested that the self-defense classes for women only and girls only be postponed while he researched the legality and the constitutionality of such. I would like to place this item on the agenda and not wait for a city attorney finding or opinion that such classes may be unconstitutional, discrimination based on gender. And I'd like to put that before the council in a discussion where we can talk about the issue and see what our policy would be, separate from any constitutional finding by the city attorney.
Okay, I agree.
That's fine. Can we put it on the agenda?
Yes, a future agenda.
Mr. Clerk.
Has been noticed. I should also note that Councilmember Friedman is not on the telephone anymore, but...
Okay.
It will be noted that she was here for the vote for the mayor.
Thank you.
So, my next comment is I would like to amend our city ordinance as it relates to the preferential parking districts. I would like to embed in that ordinance a requirement that staff in the affected neighborhood obtain information as to how many off-site parking spaces, meaning garages, carports, et cetera, are not being used for parking, and they are either being used for storage or converted into living spaces, and that information be given to the Transportation and Parking Commission at such time that they deliberate on a preferential parking zone. Would anyone support that?
This would be just a discussion.
This would be, well, I would...
Would we get a report from the city attorney on this?
Well, I think it would be our office, maybe also the Director of Public Works, but I think before we bring in ordinance, you need to have a staff report with the discussion so that if the council wants to have the discussion...
So, it would be a discussion which may be followed by an ordinance at such a point. Anyone support that? Well, let me say, I think that's important, and let me express to my colleagues that many preferential parking zones are requested, and in reality, the landlords of those spaces are renting out their garages as storage, they're renting them out as living spaces, and the cry by that landlord in signing the petition is, hey, there's no space for my tenants to park. So, I think we need to look at that, and at the very least, that should be a bit of information that the Transportation and Parking Commission has before it, as well as staff before it when they make recommendations.
Well, we can't debate, but that's going to be staff-intensive, and that's what concerns me. But in single-family residential zones, especially multifamily, you're right, but in single-family residential zones, that's kind of an intrusion on people's homes and their space. I don't know. What do you want to do? You want to talk about it first?
Like a discussion on the issues.
Okay, I'll second it for a discussion, but...
And, thank you.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that for multifamily and single-family neighborhoods, preferential parking in both, or... parking in both, or?
I think it should apply anywhere. I mean, if a landlord is signing something saying, there's no parking for me, and he's got a garage leased out, or he's got a garage that's filled with, you know, collectibles, that should be information, that shouldn't defeat a preferential parking zone, but it should be a bit of information that comes to the TPC that makes this, that makes these decisions. So, I have support, and that's what I'm thinking of at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Okay. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next on the agenda is the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
We have roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda as listed is oral communications.
Yes, and we have two cards, speaking cards. First is Margaret Hammond. Margaret, three minutes.
Our new mayor, members of council, city staff, and members of the audience, and the children are very well behaved.
Grandparents.
I'm taking an early oral today because I have a special event that involves one of our city jewels in the city, the Doctor's House up in Brand Park. We are going to be having, Glendale Historical are sponsoring or hosting a Victorian Easter event in the Friendship Park in front of the Doctor's House Museum. That's on the northwest corner of Brand Park, next to the library. It will be Sunday, April the 13th, and the gates open at 1:00 P.M. The Easter egg hunt starts at 1:30. Events like Run Bunny Run, Egg and Spoon Race, Cotton Croquet on the grass in front of the Doctor's House. There'll be graces, games of hoops and sticks, Valerie's Happy Days Old Fashioned Ice Cream will be served, handmade ice cream. They'll be churning out three flavors of handmade ice cream for you to get in the gazebo. Doors of the Doctor's House will begin at 2:00 P.M. for children and adults alike. Best up in your Easter finest to enjoy the afternoon. Children participating in the egg hunt are encouraged to bring their own baskets. Five-dollar donations are requested for this special event, and I think it'll be terrific. We've done it in the past, it's been almost more people than there was room for up at the house, because it is a terrific event for, from the days of the Victorians, that they did this Easter egg, and for children. It's really a wonderful event. The other event I would like to talk about is tomorrow night, or tomorrow afternoon, I should say, the poster contest is going, being held in the auditorium, which is on Verdugo Road, and that's Wednesday, April the 9th, and the contest will, I mean, contest, the presentations will start at 4:30. So, I know Mr. Weaver has come in the past.
Every year.
And one of, always, and because it's important, our children put in a lot of work on these posters, and the teachers put in a lot of work getting the children through that whole thing of participation and so forth. Makes for good citizens overall. Now, I know this is not an event, but it's an ongoing event, and this is the bulky item pickup, and I'm going to say it because people always say, say about picking up all the old couches and furniture and refrigerators. Phone number, five, four, eight, three, nine, one, six. Just remember, you don't need to have your streets make us embarrassed or ashamed, you can just call that number, and they are happy to pick up. Thank you, Mr. Zern. Also, thank you very much for the San Fernando Road. Looks great, the landscaping.
Ms. Hammond, will you mention the time of the Easter egg hunt one more time, day and time?
One more time.
Yeah.
The actual hunt will start at 1:30, but we will open the gates before that so that the children can come in and play in the park and so forth.
And the date was when, the date?
The date is this Sunday.
This Sunday, great.
Right. And they, we'll open the gates at 1:00, probably before that.
Thank you, thank you. Leon Meyer.
Congratulations, Mayor Sinanian.
Thank you, Leon. Good to see you, as always.
My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here from the library, and first of all, Arlene Vador from the Brand Library cannot make it tonight, April 7th, that's just two days from now. Robert Hilburn, author of Johnny Cash, the Light, will be talking and at the, at the 7:00 at the Brand Library. I have more information on him if anybody's interested. Mr. Hilburn attended R.D. White Elementary School, and he made a special appearance by the mighty Cash Cats some time ago. Anyway, music by Johnny Cash, there's a lot of people still love him, love the name. That's April 7th, Brand Library. Parking is free, no fees are required. Now, about two months ago, I read in the Los Angeles Times an article by Miriam Powell. Miriam Powell has for 25 years been a Los Angeles Times writer, she's a, has a remarkable career and with the Times and as a writer, and she was a Pulitzer Prize winner as well. And the book she wrote was The Crusades of Caesar Chavez, and something about the book and the little that we heard about it sounded like something that would be of great interest to the Glendale community. So, we looked into it and found out that the book was not quite published yet, and within the last six weeks, seven weeks, I'm not sure, it was published. And she's now, it's such a great book, she's going to be talking at Boebard Auditorium, 10:30 this Saturday, at the Festival of Books at USC. So, I ask anybody to go there if you can. If you can't make that, on May 28th, at the Central Library, 7:00, we're going to have Miriam Powell talking about her book, The Crusades of Caesar Chavez. And Caesar Chavez is known to most people, and most people don't know all the things about him that Miriam Powell does, and she'll, she tells everything about him, the good and the bad in her book. And he was a visionary with certain flaws, he was a disciple of Mahatma Gandhi as far as nonviolence, and they just recently named April 1st as, in honor of Caesar Chavez. And The Crusades of Caesar Chavez revealed how his most unlikely, how this most unlikely hero united one of the great social movements of our time. The Latin Association, Glendale Latin Association, is cosponsoring this, and I plan, over the next several weeks, to bring in somebody from various organizations to give you their take after I let them read my book about Caesar Chavez.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Raise your hand if you're interested in some of the material I have. Thanks again, and good luck to you.
Thank you. And we have one more speaker, but before we go to the next speaker, there's some little kids in the room that, I don't know how much tolerance they have for city council meetings, so feel free to leave. Thank you. Okay. And the, the next speaker is Regina Wheeler. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Regina Wheeler, recycling coordinator here at the City of Glendale, and I wanted to invite the community to attend the city's Earth Day event. I have flyers here, and there will be a slide shown on the screen. The Earth Day event will be held on Saturday, April 26th, from 11:00 to 2:00 P.M. at Pacific Community Center, which is located at 501 South Pacific Avenue. There will be a number of activities, including an interactive water conservation show, kids' activities such as face painting and a rock climbing wall, and also prizes. We invite the community to come out and bring their old electronics and eyeglasses to recycle to the event, so please come out to learn about the environment and support Earth Day on April 26th. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that's the last card that we have. What's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Item number seven, under adoption of ordinance, is 7A, is Director of Community Development regarding establishment of the Brockmont Park Historic District Overlay Zone. This was offered on March 25th, 2014, by Councilmember Sinanian.
Mr. Sinanian, since you're now the mayor, I'd like to move 7A for you.
Thank you. Second it. May you have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Great, so we have another historical district in the City of Glendale. Congratulations. And what is next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Next on the agenda, under eight action items, 8A is Chief of Police regarding purchase of TASER electronic controller devices. 8A1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and improving purchase from pro-force law enforcement.
Okay, and who do we have from police?
I can give just a very quick overview, sir, and certainly if the chief or Captain Stokes wants to come forward if you have any questions. We have an employee, the TASER, I believe it's the X-26 TASER, for our non-lethal weaponry. At this point, we are looking to upgrade to a different TASER product, I believe it's the X-26P, it's a digital product. Because we use TASER, we are, we need to stick with TASER if we're going to continue with that line of non-lethal weaponry, so it becomes a sole-source contract. As you see, we are asking that we would spend $182,124.87 that would be used for the purchase of this equipment. If you have any questions about the process or about the use of the equipment itself, I'm sure PD can answer those for you.
Weaver, I'll move 8A1.
Just one question. So, again, why are we dispensing the competitive bidding? I know you answered it, but just, I want you to accentuate it one more time.
Because this is a proprietary, sole-source type of product. We're using TASER, and so if we're going to continue with TASER as a company for their product, we have to work with them for this upgrade.
And the reason we're sticking with TASER is because that's the product?
They are a leader in the field, and we have equipment that fits their equipment, so if we were going to move away from TASER, we would have to re-outfit new holsters, new, the little readers that go along with it, in addition to just going from the analog to the digital.
Okay, so we have a motion pending.
I'll second it.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes, next item.
HB is Director of Public Works regarding police building maintenance contracts. B1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and amending contract with Mitsubishi Electric and Electronics USA for elevator maintenance. B2 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and amending contract with National Fail-safe Inc. for fire alarm system maintenance.
Who's going to take this one? You or Mr. Zern?
Between Mr. Zern and myself, I'm sure we can handle it. The equipment that we have at the police station, it's Mitsubishi Elevator, thus, if we're going to have the service from the manufacturer, it would be Mitsubishi Manufacturing, Mitsubishi Electronic and Electric and Electronics USA is the name of the, the actual company. With respect to the fire inspection, Steve?
It, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, much the same. It's National Fail-Safe, it's a proprietary alarm system that was installed when the building was installed. The only change has been is that the original company was absorbed by another company, but the proprietary information and all of the rights that go with it have been maintained. It is the only system of its kind, and it is only maintained by the parent company. And just to add on the Mitsubishi, that's two of six total elevators in the building. Mitsubishi does not allow their product to, they don't allow their parts to be distributed by anyone else, they don't allow anybody but Mitsubishi technicians to work on it. All of the rest of the elevators in the city, every single elevator in the city, has been combined, although we probably have seven or eight manufacturers have been combined under one maintenance contract. We cannot do that with Mitsubishi.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I tell you, I'm disappointed that whoever made that decision was allowed to, to do it, because there's plenty of American manufacturers that produce elevators for the rest of the world. We wind up with a Mitsubishi, and now they have the gall to not let us enter maintenance contracts with other companies.
So, mental.
There's a restraint of trade that we.
Mental note for all of us, when this comes to us, I'm sure, a while from now, we'll take that into consideration, making the decision as to who we should go with in the first place.
I'll move the item. HB1 and 2. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes, next item, please.
Next item, HC is Director of Human Resources regarding purchase of safety footwear for eligible employees. C1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and executing a purchase order for up to five years, renewable by year, to the Red Wing Shoe Company for an amount not to exceed $340,000.
We can do this, I'm sure Mr. Doyle can come up and answer any questions you might have. As part of the negotiations with our employee associations, we provide safety footwear. In the past, we had provided a stipend, unfortunately, that resulted in some folks buying good footwear and other folks buying less than good footwear, and then running out of their footwear and not having the, the industry-standard safety footwear that we would use. Thus, it was negotiated with the groups previously that we would provide footwear through a selected provider, and that selected provider is Red Wing Shoe Company, so we are going directly to the manufacturer to ensure the best pricing, but in fact, it is a sole-source contract. The amounts that are listed there in your staff report, but if you have any specific questions about the negotiation itself, I'm sure Mr. Doyle can answer those for you.
I'll move HC1 if there's no comment.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. What is next on the agenda?
Under nine hearings, 9A is Director of Public Works regarding conditional vacation of a portion of the first alley west of Central Avenue, south of Wilson Avenue, alley 241, vacation case number 175B. At 9A1 is a resolution ordering the vacation. 9A2 is a resolution adopting plan number 12-234.
Will you read 9B in also?
9B is City Attorney regarding denial and findings of design review case number PDR 1308302, located at 2631 Hermos Avenue. 9B1 is a motion overturning DRB's decision denying the application and making findings.
Is this item still on the agenda today?
Well, maybe we can do 9A separately from 9B.
Let's do that.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're saying we're going to pull 9B, so I had it read in, so you can dismiss that out of term.
We, we can have a quick discussion about 9B as soon as we get through this one, if it's your pleasure.
Okay.
Because I think there's a way to move forward on 9B if it's the council's pleasure, but 9A is a hearing. We apologize, inadvertently, this item should have been on your afternoon agenda. You considered the project from the Malaski Group of Companies at Central and Wilson. In that project, you were advised that we would be vacating an alley that is the first alley west of Central Avenue that forms the driveway for that mixed-use project. This, in fact, is that alley that we are asking that you approve, the resolution ordering the, the conditional vacation, and then the adopting plan that's attached in the accompanying resolution. If you have any specific questions, either Mr. Zern or Mr. Golanian can answer those for you, but this was the matter that you considered earlier today.
You have to open that hearing, Mr. Mayor, on this one.
Yes, we have one public speaker, Mr. Adam Kazazian.
Yeah. Hearing's been opened?
Yeah.
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Sinanian. The question I have is, I don't believe you should vacate the alley, I believe you should give them an easement for building it underground and overhead easement, because someday they can go over and close this, because this is going to be a thoroughfare area, it's still going to go through. So, someday they could decide to put a chain on it and close this thing and not make it accessible to the, to the public again. So, if you give them that, or if you're not going to give them the easement, you should put a condition on there that they cannot close this to the public at any time. That's one recommendation I have. The other matter I have, Wilson Avenue was designed, by the way, 40 years ago, to widen by five feet on each direction, and it's been done that on one side of the street, on, right there and across from this property, but now this property is not going to be widened, but Wilson was on the plans to be widened by five feet, which is, we're not. But now this property is not going to be widened, but Wilson was on the plans to be widened by five feet, which is, we're not doing it now. So that should be some consideration to do that. And you're putting the building right in a property line with no landscaping, which can be detrimental in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian. Mr. Garcia, can you respond to the comment that the impact of vacating this alley will result in the developer being able to just close it off one day?
That's probably true. I defer to Mr. Galan, but typically the vacation, it vacates that. It's already an easement for street purposes. It's vacating it to the owner of the underlying fee, and I assume that's the case here.
Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is specific stipulation in the development agreement that forbids the developer or the property owner from closing this vacated portion of the alley, and it needs to remain open to public use, much as the same with the Galleria Development south of Orange.
So that's exactly the recommendation that Mr. Kazazian was making in the first place. With respect to the five-feet setback issue, or I'm sorry, the widening issue that he raised?
I don't recall that there has been a design or a plan to widen Wilson at that intersection. We, a few years ago, widened Wilson by five feet or so south, on the south side, west of Brand Boulevard, because that was prerequisite for some mitigation measures as part of the development of Americana.
Understanding that on the other side of Central, it's truly part of the downtown versus blending into the, the residential districts to the west.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Want to close the public hearing?
Want to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I'll move nine A, one and two.
Second. Roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
No.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sanayan.
Yes. What's, what's the next item?
Next item is nine B, which Mr. Kazazian already read into the record, Mr. Mayor. The council held the hearing on March 18th for this project, voted three to two to director office to prepare findings to deny the project. So it's before you today. Councilmember Friedman is not here. She was one of the votes to vote to deny the project. So the council has a couple of options. It can either take the vote, and if it ends in a two-two tie, it'll just carry over to the next regular meeting on April 29th. The council can continue to April 29th, or the council can take the vote. And obviously, any, any of the council members who voted no, meaning no, no on the motion to deny the project, can also change their vote tonight if you want to just allow the project, the denial to be final. So it's really within the council's discretion how it'll handle that. But if it ends in a two-two tie, it'll just kick, get kicked over to the April 29th regular meeting.
Why don't we just postpone?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay.
Carry on.
I just get a.
I'll move, I'll move that to a date certain.
I believe that would be the 29th, sir. Yes.
29th, and we take this matter up.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Hi.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sanayan.
Yes. Okay, and what's next?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. I see manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Larry Cohen. Please state your name for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Larry Cohen, and I've lived here in Glendale since 1975. I've become aware of the controversy of transferring funds from the Department of Water and Power to the city for providing city services. And I've given it some thought, and I've come to the conclusion that it's very defensible to do that. It seems to me that it's a very efficient way to raise revenue for the city because it's very widely distributed. And if, I can't speak to the legality of the issue, I'm just aware of the controversy surrounding it. And it seems to me that it's probably the most desirable way to provide the broadest base of source of, of funds for the city. So I, I don't share the negative view of it that so many other people do. Just wanted to express my support for that. Otherwise, you'd have to find some other way to raise funds, and I think it would not be as efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next is Mike Moehl.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Moehl. First, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Sanayan for being our new mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Caro, I would like to thank you for last week in supporting Mayor Sanayan in his effort to maintain the people's hour. Former Mayor Weaver, on the other hand, wanted to silence his critics and limit the people's speech to three minutes or less. Councilman Najarian, first you approved nearly 4,000 new apartments in our downtown area, and now after the damage has been done, you want to put the brakes on any new development, knowing that there are a minimum of three votes for any new development discussed behind closed doors. I am sure you are hoping the winning candidate in the June election has your philosophy of mega housing projects so that you can sit back and become this so-called great conservationist and say no to any new large housing projects. The Foothill Corridor. Council, through another dog and pony show, has downzoned the Foothill Boulevard corridor with the end results of actually upzoning the, to allow developers to put up large multi-housing projects. In addition, 20 to 25 percent of these new large apartment complexes will also have low-income housing to mirror downtown and south Glendale with increased traffic, congestion, and crime. Councilwoman Friedman, when you were recently mayor pro temp, I reminded you and council that approximately 90 percent of our parkland comes from grants from the county, state, or federal government. Consequently, only 10 percent of parkland money comes from the city general fund. With over 60 percent of the city's budget going for just the police and the fire union's salaries and pensions benefits, our council will continue to count on using grant money to fund essential needed city services. Mrs. Friedman, you immediately silenced me last week when I stated the reason for the limited city money for parks was because of the signed employment contracts you provided for your union supporters. Employment contracts that would allow our former city manager, Jim Starbert, to receive a $248,000 per year lifetime pension, or former chief of police, Ron DiPampa, to retire at age 57 with a lifetime pension of approximately $197,000 per year. As a member of the California Public Retirement System, Glendale taxpayers guarantee 7.5 percent return on the Calpers' investments. And when the retirement system fails to make their goals, Glendale citizens are on the hook for the lost investments. Last year, Calpers only made 1 percent return on their investments, and Glendale taxpayers were on the hook for 6.5 percent difference, or about $30 million. In the previous year, Glendale taxpayers had to make up over $26 million. The average social security check is about $15,000 per year. And we have many city employees with annual pensions of over $100,000 to $200,000 for life at age 50 or 55. In the December 18, 2012 article in the Glendale News Press, Bob Elliott, Glendale Director of Finance, stated approximately 84 percent current pension liability was unfunded. And he further stated, quote, "At some time, at some point, we'll probably have more retirees than active." Council members, why don't we join the cities of La Cañada and Malibu, and on a trial basis, have the county perform our fire and police services at a significant savings? The county of Los Angeles pension plan does not put the taxpayer on the hook for any investments. Mayor Sanayan, did you know our city manager, Scott Ochoa, took a chunk of the federal money from the Community Development Block Grant Program for the city building and safety department? The block grant money from Uncle Sam averages about $20 million annually, and is supposed to help the needy, the poor, the elderly, and after-school youth programs? And finally, Councilman Weaver, with lawsuits against the city, with the Glendale Fire, with, against the city from the Glendale Coalition for Better Government, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and the petition to repeal the 7 percent utilities users tax, Councilman, who speaks for Glendale citizens?
Thank you, Mr. Moehl.
My name is Mike Moehl.
Councilmember Najarian?
Now, I haven't determined yet whether it's your confusion or pathology which causes you to lie, Mr. Moehl. I challenge you to pick any project of any significant size in the downtown area and find me voting for it. To say that I voted for 4,000 units of the downtown, in the downtown area, is absolutely ludicrous and can only be a fabrication for some ulterior purpose. I'm not sure what that purpose is. But again, you've made the best argument that anyone can make to limit public comment to three minutes because you're so confusing, I don't think anyone could follow you.
Thank you.
Mr. Najarian, he already left the council chambers, so we didn't hear everything you said.
Yes, and next speaker?
That aside from his name and the fact that Bob Elliott did, was quoted in the paper as saying, "At some point, there will be more retirees than actives." I think everything else there probably was up for conjecture. And indeed, as time goes on, as you're seeing folks live longer, you're seeing it in the social security system. We have many, many, growth of many folks in the retirement versus the, the working ranks. So everything else, I would have to concur with, with Mr. Najarian, was wildly fantastic.
Mr. Chilla, we're reducing the workforce, so that even adds to the fact there'll be more retirees than active.
Thank you. And next speaker is Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mayor Sanayan, city council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Weisman from far north Glendale. The reason I'm here tonight is to speak about an item that is going to be on the Planning Commission agenda on April 16th. And that item is a request by the Shomlien School, which is at 4444 Lowell Avenue in far north Glendale, to increase their enrollment from its current cap of 500 students to 700 students. Now, back in 2010, the school wanted to build a gymnasium. And in order to do that, they had to get a, they had to get use in standard variances for a building taller than was allowed in the zone, for a floor area ratio that was larger than what was allowed in the zone, and for a parking reduction. And each one of those items had a stipulation tied to it that it was on the, it was contingent on the enrollment being capped at 500 students. Now, what happened with that gymnasium was that the Planning Commission turned down the variances because they could not make all of the required findings. Mr. Rodney Kahn, the consultant for the project, appealed to the city council, and the city council unanimously found in his favor and overturned the decision of the Planning Commission. And at that meeting, which was in these chambers, May 31, 2011, Mr. Sanayan, you weren't here, but I believe the other council members will probably all remember that meeting because Mr. Kahn packed these chambers with many dozens of students from the Shomlien School. And I have to admit, it was a brilliant piece of theater. And it, it worked as well as it was intended because this council voted unanimously to overturn their own planning commission in this decision. Similarly, the Design Review Board, number one, denied the design for this project. Again, Mr. Kahn appealed it to the city council, and again, the city council unanimously overturned that appeal, I believe, with the exception of Councilmember Friedman, who may not have been here for that vote. There were things that were said at those meetings over and over again. And I'm going to quote some of the things that were said. Mr. Roger Kiesel, who is the planning officer for the city of Glendale, whose case this was and whose case it still is, he said, and I quote, "The school is not intended to grow or expand." Mr. Rodney Kahn, when he spoke at this very podium on that hearing on May 31st, he said, and I quote, and I went and I looked at the video, so this is a direct quote. He said, "There will be no increase in student enrollment." Period, end of sentence. Not, "There will be no increase at this time," or any weasel words. "There will be no increase in student enrollment." The noticing for the enrollment expansion only went out to people within a 500-foot radius of the project. In late March, the Planning Commission will consider the proposed mitigated negative declaration on April 16th, which is also the end of the comment period. There are many, many people in the area who, who will be affected and who already are affected by the traffic problems caused by the school that would like to comment but don't know about this project. And I'm here to urge you tonight, if at all possible, let's postpone this to a date certain a month from the current date so that there can be enough time to let everybody in the area know what is going to be happening and give them a chance to comment appropriately on the proposed mitigated negative declaration. I don't have very much time left, but the heart of the mitigation that is proposed is bus service from downtown Glendale that will shuttle students from downtown Glendale back and forth every morning and every afternoon to the Shomlien School. And the number of buses, the routes they're going to take, all of that is unknown because there is supposed to be a traffic control plan produced by the Director of Public Works and the Director of Planning. That plan does not exist yet, as far as we know. The public is not going to have a chance to comment on it because it's going to be done administratively. And so I urge you, in the interest of fairness, to please postpone this, if you can, for one more month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. And last speaker is Aram Kazazian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aram Kazazian. I came here this afternoon, I didn't realize that you don't have Oral Communication Redevelopment section of it. Was, so I apologize, I guess that's something to learn, I guess, now. But the reason I'm, I'm came in front of you, last week you voted to approve a 46-unit apartment building on Wilson and Maryland owned by Mark Nathanson. Mark Nathanson also is going to build movie theaters, move it on the corner of where the Panda Inn is. Also is going to build a 10,000 square feet of restaurant space in the building. The building has 46 units, going to be 46 parking spaces only. Now, we have 110 parking spaces at that site, which is going to be displaced by this large building, plus you're only going to get 46 spaces. The reason I am here, because I believe that approval was not legal. The legality is the staff misinformed council what the trend, what was going on. He said that when, six years ago, when they came in for design review one, that was approved with no parking. It was on design review, stage one was approved with zero parking, and there were three votes. It was Laura Friedman and John Raymond, and I can't remember the other councilman that approved it. Aram Najarian, I know he voted against that at the time. And then when John Raymond lost his election, Rafi won. The second stage of redevelopment came in to approve for the second. And they, they had approached Aram Najarian, they had wanted to get his vote, and they had, there was an agreement made somehow to provide 46 parking spaces, one per unit. And, and that, Mark Nathanson wanted a million and a half dollars to put the 46 parking spaces, which doesn't cost that much. What I'm saying is, $1.5 million was not given originally, I believe. Mark, $1.5 million was assigned for the 46 parking spaces, which is the cost of, is only half of that. I came over here, testified to that, because the foundation of the building itself is still there. By adding the 46 parking spaces, it doesn't cost that much more. Now, he, now Mark Nathanson wants another $1.1 million on his pot, which you guys are. Now, he, now Mark Nathanson wants another $1.1 million on his pot, which you guys approved it last week, and he said that $1.1 million was additional. So, I believe he should go back and do some study on that because what was presented to you, it's, and he said if we don't approve it, he still gets the $1.5 million, he still don't have to put any parking, which is not true. The $1.5 million was given to him to provide the 46 parking spaces according to redevelopment, and the $1.1 million now you're going to give, it doesn't come from redevelopment, it comes from the public. The public ends up paying for that money to him. And so, there is some discrepancy. I will pull Public Record Act on that to go back six years and get all the information so I can, I can figure out exactly what happened, which I'm going to request it tonight, the public request for all the documents on that particular project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kazazian. Can a public request be made orally, at oral communications? Yes? Okay. So duly noted. And we have no more speakers. Do we have, what's next on the agenda?
Next is any new business.
We have new business today.
I have new business. I move that the council hereby authorizes the city attorney to enter into an agreement with the law firm of Pillsbury Winthrop, Marcus Wu, to advise and assist the city attorney's office on employee benefit matters. In addition to other provisions, the retainer agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney and the director of finance.
Can we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinayan.
Yes. All that new business?
Yes, and I'd like to move the matter of Curry versus the city of Glendale et al., L.A.S.C. number EC060554. The claims of plaintiff Colleen Curry be compromised and settled in the amount of $80,000 to the plaintiff, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. The Director of Administrative Services Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the, by the city attorney upon the execution by the plaintiff of a dismissal against the city with prejudice.
Second. Can we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sinayan.
Yes. And next items adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.